Good afternoon. Thank you for this opportunity to provide you with a briefing on the essay Climate Ready Plan. It'll be fairly brief. I really just want to highlight what has been going on with public engagement, what we've been hearing, and what the pathway forward is. There's been a lot of discussion, I think, on all sides. So I think that being said, it's exciting that we're at least to this point where we are having this robust conversation around this. I think the key is, what's that pathway forward? So, again, why are we doing this? I think we all know. We started talking about this sort of built into the essay in the Essay Tomorrow Sustainability Plan, which led to some movements on a resolution related to the Paris Climate Agreements in June 22nd, and then the agreements with UTSA and CPS on November 30th, 2017, to begin the development of this plan. Whoa. And so, you know, the plan has a couple of different components. It's looking at how we reduce our emissions that are contributing to climate change, and how do we prepare our community for those impacts. And at the same time, it's looking at municipal operations as well as the community as a whole. And so, this is just a list of what we did that led to the draft plan. Again, you know, we engaged 90 stakeholders through the process who served on the steering committee, and five technical working groups, meeting with different stakeholders, business, industry, residents, institutions, neighborhoods, over 145 individual events, over 3,400 individual survey responses, and really focused on that idea of climate equity engagement going into those neighborhoods that traditionally aren't engaged in this process. And so I just want to highlight just that, this is just a snapshot. This was from one of our surveys that was really trying to get to a sort of initial sentiment around, should we be doing this? And this is based, albeit, just under 1,400 responses. But again, you know, do people believe that this is happening and it's being caused by human activity? 73% said yes. And do you support city council moving forward on this? 82% saying yes. Now, again, caveat, this is not necessarily representative of the communities, those that took the time to respond to the survey. And it was also before there was so much awareness around this, so I think it needs to be tempered. The only other thing I would also point out is there have been some national surveys done at the county level by an organization called, it's the Yale Climate Change Program, and they just do national survey. At Bear County level, they found that 55 to 60% of respondents agree that this is something that's happening and we should be doing something about. So I think it's consistent with what we've been seeing in local life. So, and then in terms of numbers to date, leading up to the draft plan, we had 38 individual business events with 506 attendees, 108 community events, which touched over 5,500 individuals, 21 neighborhood association events with 470 attendees. Target stakeholder events, that's really going into those specific neighborhoods that we were really trying to focus on, those that usually aren't just coming up to meetings. 43 of those, 675 attendees. And so when we add that up, we're looking at just over 7,000 people touched in some way with this plan. So if we start looking at what's been done since the draft came out, and then, you know, we've been working on this for over a year, and having events and having meetings, but it really wasn't until that draft plan hit that people said, wait a minute, you know, what is this? And so, there's been a tremendous amount of response in just about a month. Comments received to date, about 683, and those have come through emails, the website, in public meetings, community events, or direct phone calls. And so we started looking at, and we were basically, we are documenting them, editing them all into a spreadsheet, and I mean, that's all available. If you want to sit down and then go over with you, we'd be more than happy to. But what do we do with it? How do we start aggregating it? And so what we did for the initial exercise is looking at, you know, what's clearly a positive response. You know, I support this, we need to do this, we need to do more. There's those that are clearly like, why, we shouldn't be focused on this. Then there's a big section where we're going through mutual responses, where it doesn't really lean one way or another. It was more, you should focus on more vitamins. Well, that person may or may not support the plan, or somebody might say, please make sure my utility bills don't go up. We don't really exactly know where they land, but, so I think this data can be parsed more, but this is sort of our first blush at looking at it. And so we can see, just based upon these 683 responses, 33% show a positive response, 7% show a negative response. And the one other thing I'll add is, on both sides, they're very passionate. I mean, it's very, it's very clear that they definitely believe in their position. So then we also have our survey that's out, and we have, let's see, 1,613 responses, and that actually has gone up. I checked that before I came here, and that's about 720 so far. So there's a lot, I mean, people are taking the time to take this survey, and we keep pushing it out everywhere we can. Again, same exercise, I think with the survey, it's a little easier because it's on a scale from 1 to 5. And so we basically looked at, those are saying, you know, 4 to 5, we support it. Those 1 or 2 are scoring things 1 to 2 are negative. And then sort of in that middle range, it's sort of, we're sort of neutral about it. And so you can see, just based upon the survey, 66% of respondents are positive, 24% are negative, and 10% are neutral. But then when we look at the actual survey comments, 579 people took the time to actually provide comments on those surveys. And of those, the majority of those are either neutral or negative. And so what we're seeing is those that are particularly passionate about this, are a lot of concerns, are really taking the time to document it and write it into the notes. So we have that record. And the main concerns are around the costs as well as just the politics. Why are we doing this? This isn't something that there's even believed that we should be doing this on. And so then we also took a look at all of the, sort of just those email or those other comments that we received that were non-survey. And again, that exercise, you know, looking at 33% positive, 60% neutral, 7% negative. The other thing we'll be doing is, we're going to keep collecting all these comments, for all the surveys in particular, as well as, I think we're starting to ask for all the people submitting formal email submissions through the website, we're asking for zip codes. So we'll be able to work with the consultant to start framing those responses by council districts. So we'll be able to provide you some information as far as what we're hearing from a particular district. Then we had a community meeting on February 19th, very well attended, over 130 people, 300-plus comments received. People who are supportive were very interested in mobility, and that's something that we've seen time and time again in surveys. I think people are very much interested in having other options to move around the city. There was a high interest in education, and continue the dialogue around this topic, and really making sure that there's more opportunity to provide feedback. Again, the concerns, similar to what we've heard in the past, costs associated with implementation. Basically, it's disbelief that climate change is occurring, and wanting more specific strategies and targets associated with the plan. And then there were some suggestions around, you know, how do we increase energy efficiency through new technologies or policies? Make sure that big corporations are involved in continuing to conserve water and protect the aquifer. Overall, people who attended the meeting were supportive, but there was definitely a small group of people who had a lot of concerns, and voiced that at events. So we've been working at, you know, as I mentioned, once the draft hit, it was clear that there was a lot of interest to discuss this point. And so we built an extra month into the timeline to allow for more conversation. After this, I'm heading over to D9 events, where we're meeting with neighborhood associations, we're meeting with different business and industrial sectors, where we're somewhere every day talking to people and capturing that information. This is just a proposed timeline based upon that additional 30-day window. This is all up for discussion. Basically, with that 30-day window, it basically pushes us out to May for a consideration of the vote. And here are just some of the things that we are currently focused on over this extended comment period. Again, meeting with industry and business stakeholder meetings, such as chambers of commerce and other particular industry, neighbor associations, and homeowner associations. We have staff at libraries, basically just setting up and talking to people there. Lots of media interest, working through city council offices to get information out through their newsletters, planning an Office of Sustainability Facebook Live event, and then really making sure that we're tapping into any community events to get the word out. So with that, that's just basically a high-level overview of what we've heard so far.
Thank you Doug. Appreciate so many comments before we get into the council comments. I think I heard you say at an event earlier that you've had more engagement with the public at the Office of Sustainability since the draft plan has been released than your whole time here in the city of San Antonio.
Well, I would say, we did have, my, speaking of my second year here, we had our first sustainability forum as part of developing the sustainability plan. I think that event had maybe 700 or 800 people attend. I think for this planning process, we far exceeded all the other engagement, and excitements prior to the draft being released.
Okay, well, congratulations on all of that public input and excitement. All dialogue, I think, is good. It helps us inform the product so that we have to be as more informed from people who are going to be out there and living this, when it gets implemented. And, you know, I believe that any public input we get is meant to improve what we do, so I look forward to seeing how you will address the questions and the comments that we've gotten, which I think is what we'll discuss next time you're back. So, when you had proposed extending the timeline for public comment and for the adoption of the plan, my question to you was, all right, we're on more dialogue, but what else are we getting in that additional time span? So you've mentioned in your last slide some of the additional things that you'll be doing. But how is the plan going to be either expanded or further informed? Is there any content that you're adding to?
Yes, and so we're currently working with our consultant, Navigan, who are already evaluating the comments and seeing what we're hearing. I think there's a lot of clarification that we're going to be including around process post-adoption, as far as, you know, what the adoption of this plan actually means, and then how we move forward. And so, you know, again, the intent is, this is a long-term sort of vision document. It definitely does identify things that we need to start working on in the short term, but the intention is, with this plan's adoption, nothing immediately takes effect. That strategy's in there needs to be, as Mike Shannon had discussed, there's a process. There's a process by which we sit down with stakeholders and really sort of dig into which specific path are we taking for a specific strategy, and really make sure that we understand those consequences, whether it's related to its impact on what we're trying to accomplish, or is it affordability issue? So I think we really want to make that clear, what this document is and what the intent is moving forward. We're also looking at the economic analysis, and basically talking with the consultants who identify, based upon sort of the tool we're using, and the tool that we're using was developed by World Bank and ADCom, that, how do we get to some more detail? How do we start providing better explanation as far as what those numbers actually mean, and what's built into those numbers? The other thing that I think we have a really good story to tell historically around, that supports this work, that just, the work around flood control. And so I think one of the things we're hoping to do is provide some local case studies that really sort of reflect what this plan's intent is, where we as a community make an investment, and then we can see those results. And so when we look at what was invested for flood control, can we, working with SAWs or Versara or Bear County, come up with, what was the ROI for that investment? Can we determine what that mitigated flood risk means for our community based upon what that investment was? So I think we're going to do everything we can to try to drill down as much as possible on those economics. But the challenge is, there are so many variables, there's so much, there's so many sort of unknowns related to technology, related to market transition, that how do we come up with something that actually is a number that actually means something? So I think that's something we're really looking hard to figure out how we can do more.
Okay, so just to clarify what you said. Once something is adopted by council, then each strategy that's proposed will have its own process, kind of the same way Mike Shannon came forward here to us about this whole process for the vision of wildlife, where you had a whole stakeholder group, and people with varying opinions came through and came up with a solution that worked for the group. So that is what we plan to see happening with each of these going forward.
Yes, ma'am. And it's very similar to the Essay Tomorrow planning process, that if we just take a look at the comprehensive plan, it was a long-term vision through 2040. That plan was adopted, however, the planning department has been working very hard since adoption to bring the community and the stakeholders along on regional center planning, to get to a point where there was comfort as far as what that next step is. So, again, this is a, it is a policy document. It does frame where we as a community think we should be going. And so there are implications with that, but as far as detailed implementation and the actual specifics of the paths that we're going to take, that means, I mean, we're going to have to have a lot more conversation about what that means and understanding what those implications are.
Yeah, I think that's a good analogy. I think it's a little hard to make people feel, for some people to feel comfortable with this approach. As you said, some people are like, we gotta do this, we have to be, you know, even more bold with it. But it is like Essay Tomorrow, we said, the community is going to grow, so let's try to direct that where it works best for the vision that we have. So I think a lot of these cost questions, when they come to us, the truth is, these investments are going to be made, there will be dollars spent in the next, you know, 30 years, whether it's on one type of power or another. And the point for what we're doing here is saying we want it to be clean, sustainable, and it contributes to our quality of life as much as possible.
Correct. But we want to, and at the same time, we're making sure the plan reflects that, we need to make sure that we're cautious with our investment. And we need to be cautious with what it means if we're looking at energy to the ratepayer, to the business, to the low-income resident, to the city. I mean, I think, you know, the plan doesn't identify specific interim targets for certain actions, as some, you know, some people would have liked to see more aggressive targets. The plan doesn't have that, because I think we have the same concerns. You know, unless we can answer that fiscal question, we weren't comfortable sort of making those decisions. I mean, we need to have that detailed fiscal analysis before we start saying, by this near-term date, we're going to be doing something. We need to be able to provide that to the community, to the council.
Yeah, and there's, I think, what do you, there's like 45 strategies in there. So each one of those, we need to have a global analysis and a stakeholder process. And I think that is, and that itself is a investment, right? Which we can't really do until after we accept the policy direction, otherwise we'll never get there. We have 45 processes happening at the same time. So, thank you very much for your presentation. I think obviously the plan is important. It does protect our community from harm in the long term, and that is one of our roles, is protecting the health, the safety, and the welfare of residents here in San Antonio. So I think we have some comments with Councilwoman Rockhouse.
Thank you, Chair. For the presentation, we did good work, I said, consistently. You've investigated me, informed, we're on opposite sides. Some of these items is only purely from a cost perspective. And, you know, I just will continue as always to say, put a dollar to it, not a dollar sign. But for orders, dollar signs. That's not, I think part of the problem with what you're seeing with the rush of input is people are now becoming aware of the cost. It's not just the cost of the dollar value, but it's billions. We know that. And we know that there's an ancillary cost to things too, right? Jobs, other opportunities. So we have to be very careful in all that. So some of that's quantified, and some of it's not. You know, there's a lot of fear of the things that go on when you start saying it's been a kind of, when you start continue to just knock that, you know, beat that drum about, let's make sure we eventually get to a dollar value. I don't think we should vote on any of this. First of all, there's a lot of talk like, this is already a foregone conclusion. We're already talking about when we implement it, this is, it hasn't even been a vote yet. So this may not be approved, and now it's been pushed after an election cycle. We'll see, right? We'll see who sees it, because the next, you know, we'll see who's potentially making this vote next go around. So it's an interesting time period, no matter what, right? Like, we don't know if this is going to happen. So, you know, we also need to think too, I did the math, I think you said 7,000 total people input, right? That's .005 in the city. That's why I clarified, I think, and it's all, it's. It's .005. Commented on this. So while that is a huge and massive struggle, and to the chair's credit, she's been working on, you know, participation in public engagement, that is not indicative of the city of San Antonio. Any pollster, anybody doing research analysis will never believe that .005 is a decent sample of, right? You got to do a little bit more. Plus, who are these .005? Like, eventually, how many of these people are the 85 board members? Or how many people are on the Sierra Club? How many people are? You know, you got to have a fair balance and mix of that, just because you have 7,000, that could be skewed in that too. So, but I think the biggest part that I would like to see, and I'm disappointed that we're postponing it until after an election, because I think the council needs to be debating this and taking this on immediately, because really, 11 of us have to make a vote. So I think where you could help additionally in this public input piece is helping the 11 of us find out what our districts really think too. It's on us to do it, I mean, that's our job. I mean, don't get me wrong. But, you know, there's also in this number, by region of San Antonio, like, where are these, the bulk of these coming from? Are they coming from areas, if they fill out a survey, they live in almost Park?
And that's something that we can, that's something that we.
Here we go, right? Are they in Alamo Heights? Are they in, I had a guy, Bernie? I had a guy like me up, I checked him out, he's lived in Bernie. I'm like, I sent him back, go worry about the climate in Bernie, bro.
I started doing that.
But, yeah, but because it's like, you're, so I think there's just more we can do to help us make an educated decision on what our districts actually feel. Because I'll follow my district, right? And that's the key, right? And that's on me, I got to go figure it out. But I think by pushing this back, I think we've done a disservice to the council. Because you're putting, I would put this, you're putting a lamed-up council in making this decision. And we've done this kind of move before, where a vote took place with a lamed-up council. And we did it with the Alamo. Look what happened with that. And this is far bigger than the Alamo. So I challenge my colleagues that pushing this back is not the answer. It's, what is the answer is full-on engagement of the San Antonio City Council in this machine right now. It's decision-making time. If it takes us three months to make the decision, it takes three months. But we've got to get to where we understand where our districts are. And I think, I'm willing to bet, this sample is not indicative of San Antonio. It's just not. And I think the comment, people, the comments are tough one too. I mean, it's going to be tough going through comments. I get them all the time, and at some point you just get, wow, this is, you know, this is kind of other opposite ends of the spectrum. And we don't really have that, right?
Right. The middle.
Yeah, that real middle is making the decision, which I think is that 60 percentage that you're like, I don't really know, I'm kind of neutral on it. Want us to help the environment, I do. I mean, I signed the thing. I want to sign, I want to help the environment too, up to where a cost impact that is also driving my decision on the money. So, look, you've done a heck of a job. I think you've come in, you've presented. Your presentations are clear, they're concise. I think you need to dig more into it. But I'm telling you, we've been at this a year, and we either get into it as a council, all of us. We should be doing this now, at this point with the full council, in my opinion. We should forward it now, let's get into the debate. Let's start putting hard numbers to these items, and then pushing into our districts and figuring out where all 10 are. Not a survey across this entire, I get it, that's one answer. But now, this is vote-making time, and the public deserves to know where we're at before May on a lot of these things. So I would tell you that I think we have to really have that hard conversation about, what point are we getting involved in this? We shouldn't get involved in it when it just comes at the end when it's time to vote. I think it's more of a council-centric, council member with their community-centric plan. Because at the end of the day, you may get with me, right, we're working it, we're going it, and I may go to my neighbor like, holy smokes, this is actually, my neighbor's actually on Vulcan. You know, this is, this is good, right? So I don't know what the answer is to driving more public engagement input. I give math, I have 155,000 people, I throw a town hall, I get 350,000, and I think I knocked it out of the park, right? I mean, it's sad all around. So I would hope we push this, like, I think we should probably figure out better ways to advertise, get this out there, because we need more. All due respect to your hard work, .005 is not reflective of where we need to be. So, I'd like to congratulate you on what you're working on, Doug, it touches that. It is transformational, but by no means is it already a foregone concluded vote. So I do appreciate your hard work, and thank you for, once again, coming before us with great respect and preparedness. I appreciate it. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rockhouse, for your comments. I do want to have a dialogue about your suggestions. I think some of them are very worthy of consideration by our committee, of course. So in terms of the timeline, I was actually discussing this with Doug myself, is that I would be more comfortable with something that happens before, something in early May. I know it's like a couple days before the election, but I would be comfortable with that. So if we had other council members commenting on that, I'd welcome in here what your thoughts are. The reason the May 16th date makes me particularly nervous is that we only have three council meetings a month, and that's the last council meeting of May. And even if it were a lamed-up council, it is, it may not be. It is still the council that voted on the resolution to do something about climate. So in terms of being a foregone conclusion, I guess what I, how I see it is, this council adopted that resolution, which I would imagine us to follow up with some level of action. That's why I think it's a foregone conclusion. Now, the details of the plan, what's going to be in there, that's what I think we need to be discussing. Like, what is it going to take? How is that plan going to have to be different to get your support on it, or to get your support on it? And that's really what this committee is intended to discuss. You went through some of those strategies with us, and that's what I want to hear from the council. And if we can't have it at this committee, if we're not ready to have that discussion today, what I'd like to suggest is that Doug and I meet with each of you individually, and the additional members of the council, precisely to have the dialogue that you're talking about. Where are the council members on this? What does the plan need to look like to get their support? I don't support just barreling something through because we said we were going to do it. I want it to be built by the members of this council and by the public. So I appreciate your comments, Councilwoman. In terms of getting additional input from the public, I think we're going to catch 22, right? Like, if we want to move this fast, that doesn't leave us much time to get input from the public. So I think we probably want to weigh which way we want to go, what's going to be more important. As someone who's tried a lot to do public input, I'm going to tell you, the further upstream a project is or a document is, the harder it is to get input, right? When it comes to zoning, it's so much easier to get people to turn out. When it comes to a planning project, it's much more abstract, very hard to get people to turn out. So I see the challenge. It would take a lot more dollars to get some of that engagement. I would be willing to propose, if the council approves something like that, to do further engagement in the community. If that is supported by the committee, I would entertain a motion on that. For anyone who supports additional input.
What I think, and I think council, I think it's voting. Well, if you don't mind, Chair, Doug, I think we should at least ask the question of Jeff. What more do we have to do to wrap this up with district-specific information, right? He's really good at it, Essay Speak Up, even though in Danny's only 7,000, 10,000 input pieces. But first piece, we look at where this input's coming from, right? The locations of the city, and then what we're lacking, we go there, we try to find information that's respective of the entire community. Does that make sense? I'm not, I wouldn't mind spending cash on wrapping up a marketing piece for a 30-day timeline or whatever, to push surveys, boost Facebook ads, social media outreach. That's fine with me. I'd support that 100%, but I think it's that important that we get people's feedback, and we force it, whether it's, whatever the answer is.
So Rod, could we get, um, Rod and Doug, could we get some sort of cost estimate back? Or proposal for doing a district-by-district outreach? Um, I would be happy to, to be among the hosts, right? If you decide to come and host something in District 7, to be one of the hosts who brings that crowd out. Um, I, I expect, I'd like to know if my council members would be willing to do the same in their district. Now, let me tell you about the community meeting that I held. Uh, this was at the Public Library. It was the first public input meeting once the draft was released. It wasn't, uh, let me give you a presentation, and then we're just gonna hear questions. It was actually a dialogue. There were about 10 tables. Each of them had eight to 10 people at them. And they really went through and kind of got into the meat of the plan. And were able, and they had facilitators at the table to actually talk about the questions. Because in the end, there will be some product that we bring to council, right? And it's really about getting into those details. And the format of that, I think, really worked to improve the meat of, of the plan. So that's what I would like to see, at least in, in District 7, if you can have.
If I could, the one thing, one thing I would want, and I work with Rod and want to make sure that we're delivering what you need. You know, I think, even if we have these, these events where people come, are we really getting...
To be certain, Doug, I don't, I'm not solely sure it's happening in another event. I mean, getting, we was...
Polling or...
Surveying like that and pushing the survey out is probably the best and quickest way we can get it done. Um, I went to your event at the Food Bank. It was, you know, like 25 people, right? But I mean, they showed up, I mean, we were there. But I, I'm not saying it's having 10 events. We don't need to reinvent the wheel, we've already done that portion. It's just, I think in the survey piece, there could, there's gotta be something additional that may have a skill set.
Well, I think we should sit down with Jeff, because again, even, even a survey that we push out, are we really getting that representative?
Okay, so if, if that's what you're talking about, okay, that's different. So we have to do some sort of public opinion, uh, survey where you have, um, you know, statistically representative sample, if that's what you're looking for, and a diverse, a diverse, uh, random sample as well. Is that what I'm hearing?
Well, what I'm hearing is, we have a tool right now, you know, automated digital survey, right? First of all, we need to get that out and try to force as many sample answers on that as we can. And that's probably what I'm talking about Bernie Jeffin, right? He's the outreach PIO, the public information person. He probably guides that, how can we start to get more input?
They actually have been working to, they have been working together, and I've sent meetings with them. So what, what hasn't happened is we haven't had every council member push that out to their districts. We put it in every single weekly newsletter that we have.
We pushed it, we pushed it too. We need to do better. There's something, my only point is just more, right? I just think we need more, that so each council person has a better understanding. I hate having to redo 10 meetings, that's not the fault, I mean, so, just run through it.
So I feel that I have a good understanding, that I've communicated with my district about it. If you wanna bring more money and resources to District 7, always will be happy to.
Well, I think we should still talk to Jeff. It's like, it, it, because like, one of the things we have been thinking about is that idea of, because Survey Monkey gets you so far. And, and, and we still get the demographics, we still get the zip codes. Um, but it'd be interesting to talk with him, see if he thinks there's value in doing something more robust or more sort of statistically significant. And then what's the cost with that, and what's the timing? Because I think, um, so I think, I agree 100%. We wanna provide you with as much information as, as possible at the district level. And we can, you know, all the surveys that we have, we can crunch those numbers. But, you know, to your, to your point, they're still relatively small sample sizes, and so is it really...
I would say that's the case for most of the engagement we do at the city. In the end, we draw the people who are interested in the topic one way or another. So I also don't wanna get to the point where we're holding this project hostage because, you know, we need more, more input on it when we don't do that for other projects. In the end, we, we use the information, the input we can, but ultimately, the decision will lie on the representatives of the people, which are, we're sitting here and who will be sitting on the diocese today. Um, are there other council member comments, Councilman Hall?
The only thing I would point out is that, um, as opposed to spending more resources now, which, uh, which might take another committee meeting, which might take another council meeting, or processing, or all that. So I do think you're losing time. I just suggest looking at the data that we do have. Um, I would be curious to see, you know, where that data currently comes from, and how those, you know, yay, may, and the mutual positions kind of line up for a district. And then I think you go after big ads, right? So if District 7 is overrepresented because council, you know, the Senate was involved.
Councilman, some of the lives.
Thank you. So just to be absolutely clear, if this is where I'm for a vote today, I vote no. Um, and for all those reasons, I'll cover it in a minute. If this same plan comes before me post-May, I vote no. Um, so let me, let me tell you why. I'd rather get this done right than get it done fast. And I applaud, in fact, it opens the comment area a little longer. Uh, but if it's just gonna be open a little longer, uh, for a few more comments to, then, that's not very meaningful. I'd like, you know, as many meaningful efforts made to get, you know, uh, a, a good sample size. You have to remember that for me, the difficulty is that in my district, uh, my three largest employers, um, you know, happen to be United States Automobile Association, USAA, Valero, and New Star. I don't know if you've got, oh, I mean, I know, in fact, you don't have buy-in from my, from those three big employers. Uh, for whatever reason, you just don't. Um, and what I've heard from them, out of their, from their leadership, is that, you know, this kind of citywide plan in a city in which they've invested billions, and in which they're a major owner of helping solve the homelessness problem, um, you know, by way of Philly and New Star, without their buy-in is troublesome. Um, and it makes it difficult, right, to explain to their employees why this, that, you know, thanks for making San Antonio great, you know, this is a plan completely missed councilly reference. Um, I, uh, I'm sensitive to that, I have to be sensitive to that, because there might be some choice, right? Um, I, I was talking to a friend of mine, she's the new, uh, chief staffer for, I think she's the chairwoman, for the, uh, the new Select Committee on Climate in the House. Um, went to Trinity, uh, and she's a road scholar, much smarter than me. But I'd like to, I'd like to see us be better informed about whether or not we've got the Climate Adaptation Plan, like it looks like everybody else's Climate Adaptation Plan. Or whether or not we really are, uh, doing the right thing and being, um, less thoughtful about, you know, whether or not our plan does enough, right? I mean, I hate to have an eighty-four-page plan that just sits on the, on the shelf, right? I've looked at your plan, it sure looks a lot like San Diego's, it looks like Philadelphia's, and it looks like Virginia's, and, um, and maybe that's because theirs are excellent too, right? Um, so what I will tell you is that I'm also very sensitive to the comments made by, you know, our business leadership community, that keep asking, you know, what's this gonna cost? And, um, I, I do challenge them. I'll tell them, tell me which page, right, defends you the most of this Climate Adaptation Plan? And then they'll break down and tell me, well, I've never read it. But they're still very funny, right? Because they know that it's full of hippie stuff. Uh, and, uh, the, uh, and, I mean, that's just what I'm saying. Um, and, you know, they're, uh, and they show up to the table with their own biases. You and I have both seen the strange email that we got last night, uh, from the Manufacturing Association. Uh, the, uh, it was very, very odd. Uh, but, um, you know, in fact, they included emails about how, or included links to videos that prove that Vladimir Putin is funding the, 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 who are pushing these plans. Um, so, anyway, if you've got anybody, if you've got any money, I'd buy a piece of it. Uh, the, but I, I will tell you, um, that I, I do wanna make sure that just because we've gotten an extended period of comments, that there is an open mind on your end and on our end to modify the plan in reaction to those comments, right? And if we're hearing from every major employer in the city that we're not on board, right? And, um, you know, mighty nice plan out there, but, you know, we're the ones that have a finger on the pulse of the market. Um, and that's really not much of a plan, it's more of a concern if you don't have, you know, thought leadership, and if you don't have business leadership, you might do. I'll remind you also that, you know, as much as we would like to tell, tell you that they will be selling these many kinds of cars over the next few years, um, you know, they don't have, they don't have to comply with anything. Uh, in fact, um, you know, even the federal government, when it comes up with CAFE standards, doesn't just set standards and say, live with it, right? They do that in consultation with the manufacturers. Some types of manufacturers will come and say, you know what, administration? Your CAFE standards are too low. We, the market would, you know, appreciate this new product that we're putting out. And over the decades, those CAFE standards have been improving dramatically. And you've got cars now who, um, you know, are really just miracles, actually, uh, as far as how little they've been, right? And you've got electric cars. Uh, and so I, I don't think that, you know, a plan in the absence of that kind of input, um, is the best plan you can put out there. Um, lastly, I'll, I'll tell you that for me, a plan that I would agree to, and I can tell you this in the absence of public comments, and in the absence of multiple meetings with you, I can tell you that this is what I would, I would get, you know, enthusiastically. A plan that is mostly incentives, all carrot, no seed, right? Because the, the most impactful policy that you'll ever have is one in which you get buy-in from the people, as opposed to, you know, you show me the, 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 that's where I'm coming from on this one. Um, and, uh, that's what I'm looking for. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Councilmen. So now we know what we need to change to get your yes vote on the plan, I believe that was what you stated.
Well played.
Okay.
Uh, so, uh, what, I think, what I stated is what I stated.
Okay. Um, I know, but I am, I wanna make sure I, I understand your, sorry, I just watched all those Senate or representative hearings on TV with microphone, and I'm so excited about having the microphone again that I have in the committee right now. Um, so, uh, I wanna make sure I understand what you said. And there was a part about not approving the plan today or after May 4th. But then you said that you wanna make sure our plan is strong enough.
I wanna make sure that our, so let me, let me clear that, let me repeat it. If you put in front of me a plan that is an incentive plan as opposed to a mandate plan, are you gonna support it?
You heard it, you're first.
Well, I did, and I, I think it would be really good to, um, to sit down and go, go through, so we can really sort of, like...
There are a lot of mandates in the country now, so...
And I think that's what, and I think that's where we really need to, yeah.
So let me tell you what I don't see in the plan. I finally did manage to finish it. I don't see anything in the plan that says, and this comes with no mandates, it's all incentive, right? If this is gonna be a structure, I mean, really what we're looking at is a skeleton, right? Uh, and a collection of, you know, ambitious goals, right? Again, I love ambitious goals, and I love skeletons, but let's not forget, the scariest movies are all future skeletons, right? Uh, and in this instance, what makes your business community very nervous is that there's no mention in there of how we plan to implement the plan when it comes to them. There's, it's totally silent as to incentives, and it's totally silent as to mandates, and it's not clear. And ultimately, they're our customer, right? And if our customers know it, it's not clear. Let me make that clear.
Yeah, we realized that afterward, it's like, well, of course that's what, what we meant. So the language will be clarified, that's what I'm gonna even mention. Another thing that we have requested, at least I have requested, that staff insert into the document are some specific case studies of something that has issues that have, sorry, programs that have already occurred that would be aligned with this plan. So for instance, the SEP program that CPS put forward. Because of that, there, there was a public investment in that that CPS had to make. Um, but nonetheless, what it did is it saved the ratepayers who benefited from that. It saved that money. And in the end, uh, probably reduced the need to add generation capacity to CPS, which is a huge ratepayer, or, uh, sorry, a huge, uh, money saver for the ratepayers. Uh, another example would have been the SaaS program. Uh, they didn't, because of that investment in water-saving technology, that benefited every single ratepayer who didn't have to pay for an additional gallon of water. Um, we also obviated the need for an additional sewer plant, which would have been a huge impact to our rates as well. These are the types of things we expect to see this plan bring forward. The investments are gonna be made, and let's make them wisely. That's what this grant was, is, is about.
Yeah, and I'm okay with that, as long as we're not investing other people's money and asking, you know, a private company to, um, you know, pay the bill for our very well-intentioned ideas, right? And so I'll give you an example of what worries me. Uh, what worries me is that what I'm hearing from the business, from the building community and the real estate community, um, is that there's a certain, that X being the dollar, that, you know, amount that we impose upon them before a single state is put into the ground in terms of, you know, regulations and fees and whatever it is that, um, they blame Red Sun just for. Uh, the, uh...
They love Red Sun. That's what I'm doing there.
Well, on water. Um, and so the, if somehow this plan ends up making it more expensive for a new family to buy a home, simply by virtue of it costing more than owning dirt, um, and, you know, before you start even putting boards and nails together, that's, you know, flies in the face of contradicts we're trying to accomplish with this housing plan. If somehow this makes it easier to rent a home as opposed to buy a home, that's a bad thing, right? And so every success case you've got, right? If, you know, if somehow, we look at Denver, for example, who's a very ambitious plan. I got to look at theirs too. And San Diego's got a really, really cool plan as well. But, you know, what I'm understanding from that plan is that all it did was make where the state looks expensive to just own, right? Um, that is, well, that's, that's not a very real thing.
And that's, I think, that's why we really were very intentional to start trying to bring back that equity thing into this before we do anything, before we do any strategy, we have to, we have to have that announced. We need to make sure that we're not making things worse by trying to make things better. So I think we're, like, we're on the same page. I think it's, what does this final plan look like, you know, to make sure everybody's comfortable with what's being brought forward.
Thank you, really good comments, Councilman, um, Councilman said thank you.
Thank you, Chair, and I just wanna ask you, Doug, because I, I do think at some point, uh, this council or the next council will vote on this plan. I just wanna make sure that we're not, we're under no illusions, that there will not still be the same question at the end of whatever process we get to, that I can't clearly spell, spell out how, how much everything is going to cost. That is not a goal to achieve privately, is that correct?
That is the big challenge, and, and I, I, and as I've, we've spoken to other sort of experts in the field, um, there's so much, there's so many assumptions, you know, we could come up with, at the end of the day, it's gonna be this huge range. And, and, um, so that's sort of the big challenge that we have right now, is how do we get into that level of detail where people feel like, okay, now we understand? Or I think the one thing I would say, and what, what makes this such a difficult plan is we sort of have this, you know, if we look back at why we're doing this, it's because we need to do what we can. Otherwise, the future's not gonna be what we want. And, and so it's, it's like this local, um, current's impact now versus future impact. So it's, it's a struggle, it's, it's a balance. I think the one thing I would say is, what's, what's important, just from my professional perspective, is this is just a starting point. We need to figure out what plan is gonna work for us now to make sure that we keep the momentum going forward. Because I, I think, um, the entire global national state landscape is changing around this, this topic. You know, right now, Yo Houston and Dallas are working on this. I've been thinking about this as sort of future-proofing, you know, San Antonio, if we start, take something around the idea of just electrifying, um, our, our transportation system. Now, the intent isn't to dictate what anybody drives, but how do we get that infrastructure out there so our community is ready for that transition if it happens? And I've been thinking, you know, if we don't do that, and the rest of the country does, what does that mean for San Antonio? So I, I think a lot of this plan is based upon market. I mean, we, we just wanna make sure that we're, we're as ahead of the game as we can be, so we're not left behind. But we need, I think to everyone's comment, we need to be really cautious and pragmatic as far as how we do this. And so I think we just define that balance. Sorry to interrupt them.
And actually, the original question, I suppose, if, if we're trying to get to a point where this looks like something the community recognizes in terms of them getting asked the question, do you support this or not? The best example in my head is, is the bond proposal. But with the bond proposal, I can tell you, every specific project they're going after, we're not spending more than this amount of money. But that's not where we're gonna get to on this plan, because that's not at all, this is apples and oranges. But the problem is some of the folks who are demanding, uh, dollar signs are wanting us to fit this into this old model of being able to get a very specific project. And we're just saying, look, this is, this is us assuming that a year from now, it's gonna be a year from now. But we're not gonna be able to know what we don't know. And if you're asking, by just looking at one industry, if I'm worried... you're asking me, just looking at one industry, if I'm worried that we're going to get pushed back from, whether the oil and gas industry, or the automotive industry, and that's going to keep me from pushing forward a plan that wants to consider, say, if San Antonio's going to implement and invest in strategies to make it resilient, I'm going to say, "Yeah." Because if you, if this was 1910, and you were to tell me that the horse and buggy industry was against us putting up gas stations everywhere, it's nuts. And roadways and highways? No. Like, you need to, you need to think about what that's going to do to my, you know, horse and buggy business. I mean, we're just holding a plan for the future, knowing it's going to happen. And we don't know what those expected electric units that we may have to install, or the, the high-oppacity vehicles or drivers' cars in the future might look like. But we're saying, "Hey, we want to do a good plan for it." And that's not a bad idea. So we're never going to get to the point where an industry, the business community, the manufacturer association is going to be very happy with a plan that assumes the future might not look exactly the way it does today. And I'm not afraid of, of regulations like prescribing to home builders, you know, sidewalks, that they be a specific ADA-compliant portion. That's going to increase the cost of their project. I'm not afraid of saying that we support a true ordinance. That means that you can't get as many homes into a specific land development. That's going to increase their cost, maybe hit on their, their, their bottom line. At the end of the day, those are the things that I support. And I, if you took that up to my community and asked them, "I'm very confident, and we can go through the process of going through a survey, we can go through the process of having town halls, and I'm very confident that they would want the city to prepare for a kind of future that has a nimbleness to it. And I'm very confident that they would say, they would support things like sidewalks, or RAEs. They, they have supported a true ordinance. The councils have supported that. They haven't been reviewed and voted on because they supported more regulation to the development. Not to say that there's not some red tape that we could work on in those industries, but, you know, we're not going to be able to, we're going to have a line-by-line audit on this. And we're just actually comfortable with that, because we'll have to vote on it, knowing that that won't be, you know, a state. It won't be, it won't be an invoice. It'll be more like a state of purpose with some sense of us having to make some, some tough decisions at some point, but we're not going to have the, the line-by-line. And I think that's what I'm worried that we're trying to get to, because that's the only thing we have exercise in terms of going back to the RAEs. These are the 198 street projects. These are the 20 range projects. So let's not pretend like we're looking to try to get...
Thank you, Councilman. And I know that there are still more comments. If you can make it super brief, because we have an even more exciting topic coming up after this.
Exciting, more exciting than this.
I know, it's impossible.
Just real quick, wholeheartedly disagree with my colleague, Mr. Ford. I'm sorry. It's like a buffet line for me, a disagreement, because it's taxpayer money.
Hold the fake, I miss it.
It's taxpayer money. The councilman references horse and buggy and automobile. That was the market taking care of itself. The government didn't jump in and force everybody into vehicles, and tell the horse and buggy people to disappear. The market took care of itself, and advancement took care of itself. The technology moved the community, and the community moved along with it. It wasn't government intervention that did it. The government responded roads and other things that, that are meant to be for automobiles. And that will happen in time as well. These are market forces that are driving this conversation. Let's be clear about that. I am 100% in support of what Councilman Glaes said about our, that's the ancillary impact I'm talking about, right? The outside impact of jobs. We lose jobs. We do not want to lose the Valeros, these people in the world. And yes, we should be concerned about them, because their impact is far and wide in our community. The good work they do touches everything. And in a drive to do something, you can make mistakes by, by your goodwill, right? And I'm, I'm sorry, we have to put the dollar value in front of the customer, which is our custo, our constituent. They have to know what they're made for. It's easy to sit here and say, "You know what, we just go for it, and, you know, it'll be a little bit." Yeah, we're talking about taxpayer money. So at the end of the day, that's the vote. And people vote for the bond overwhelmingly, because they know the cost. I guarantee you, if we put this in front of the public with no cost, it's going down. This will not pass the city. It will not pass. So we need cost with it, and an ROI, so people know what they're getting. We know it. I'll take Councilman's point and say, "Exactly. Bonds prove it, because we identify them, we quantify them, and we put a dollar value, and it passes." This will fail, because when people find out what it is, or they don't know, they're going to bail on it, because they're more concerned in their home, their life, their family, their abilities. We've got to, we've got to think about that, Doug. We've got to think about how people are living their life. And let's not turn an eye also to the business community and the things they're doing. Councilman Glaes points you on, or are spot on. So thank you.
Thank you, everyone. And again, I will be reaching out to each of your council offices so I can sit down with you and, and Doug, to talk about what the plan needs to have your support. And I am, I know you said no rebut, but I'm going to go ahead and do that. When we adopted SA Tomorrow, it was a framework about how we were going to grow and direct our resources. And I do hope the councilman hears what I'm saying, because we all heard what you were saying, that when we adopted that plan, Councilman Brockhouse, there was not a cost to it, Councilman. There was not a cost, a catch to SA Tomorrow. Yet, we have a whole planning process to implement it and to achieve those goals. And that's when those votes are, are taken subsequently. But the direction was set, and this is akin to that. It is setting a direction and a framework.